Oh, Bruce did, so I will let you report when it's your turn, okay?
I was kind of wondering on the ice skating rink that we gave away. Or did it deliver that kind of got bought up? And stuff, I don't know if it's our job to deliver it or if they're supposed to come get it or what? Or you might just touch base with them?
That, that's a DDA item.
Is it?
I believe that Mike, the one, was going to pick it up and take it.
Yeah, they discussed that and was wondering about it.
I think that he was, he had volunteered to take that over there.
Okay. So, other than that?
I believe that, that's what had been discussed.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. Next thing on, uh, next item is Ward one, and I, I only had, oh, several comments about cars on our downtown area that have out-of-date license plates. Some of them 2020, parked there for days, city streets. I took a city manager with me, we went for a ride, saw quite a few. But other than that, I have nothing else to report. So, we'll go to Ward one. Member Seeloff, did you have anything on the Board of Adjustment?
No, we haven't had a meeting. We're waiting on the fantasy, when we get it ready, bring it to, when it's ready.
Okay, thank you. The next thing is Urban Systems Committee and Ward two updates. Councilmember Garnon?
Uh, no updates on the urban system. Conversation more on the Edinburgh and Inverness intersection there, uh, just how bad that is. Cody and his team have been doing great trying to keep those holes filled. I think they fill them once or twice a month, but as soon as that ice melts, it, and the water starts running, it just washes them out. And the, the bad part is, is that the water gets so deep that you can't see where the holes are anymore. And so, it's like playing Minesweeper, and you just hope you didn't pick the bad path. And so, you know, I remember the first time I actually went through that, and it was deep. And I was in my truck, and it felt like, I almost came to a dead stop when I hit, because it was so deep, it washed so far. And people, what I've noticed are, people are leaving that right lane, going into the oncoming traffic lane to dodge it, which is, everybody does it safely, but it, it is a concern because, you know, you go out into that left lane, and if anybody turns from that, the Edinburgh Street, you're just going to be right in their path. So, I think if we could get Edinburgh, um, Street put at our priority, and try to get our funding quickly on that, too, for that sewer, and the, the drainage system in there, and move that to our priority, I think that'd probably be our best thing to do, because that's, if you look at Inverness, I don't know if this is caused by Edinburgh, but if you look up that hill, you can see the cracks and everything going up it. And it's almost like it's slough, it's like coming down into Edinburgh. And it's, and now it's destroying Inverness Street. I could be wrong, but it, it kind of, it's what it seems like is what's happening. So, if we could maybe have a, get that, move to the top priority, and get that project kicked off as soon as possible. I'd like to request it, maybe we'll have a meeting, work session to go over all that.
All right, and are you done?
Yes.
Thank you. Excuse me, Ward two, uh, update, councilman, uh, councilmember Lumen?
Well, I've had, um, people talk about the, uh, inc- possible increase in rates. And I know, um, we have many more workshops and discussions before anything's final, and have encouraged those concerned, um, to show up. Um, also, I've got a few comments about, um, the radio, um, story about the sheriff wanting to consolidate 911. At the time that that was sent, I hadn't heard anything about it. I do appreciate, um, you and Myra putting something out about what our 911 is capable of and what they do. So, I just want to thank you for keeping on top of that, um, and countering questionable things with facts. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. DDA Main Street and Ward three updates, Vice Mayor Sanger?
So, um, we haven't had a meeting this month, and we won't have one, and there's timing. People not being in town, uh, so we don't have a quorum. But we still have, the Carbon County Startup Challenge is still, um, taking registration through February 23rd. If you want more information about that, I'm going to give you the, the webpage, and it's C C W Y O H U B dot org. And you can go there and sign up if you have a, a cool idea for a business that's available to be funded in some way or another.
That's, that's, that's a really good program.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you. Next thing is Rollins Planning Commission and Ward three updates. Councilmember Weizenberg?
So, we have a meeting tomorrow for planning and zoning. Just give a quick update on, there's a special use permit proposal on, that's going to be on that agenda. If it passes through planning and zoning, it'll come before council. Hopefully, they'll be able to push that through into next agenda if it passes, so we can, uh, get that moving. So, and then I can give an update on that at that point in time, too, if it passes. So, um, that's for planning and zoning. Just the Ward three update, the only thing I have is kind of along the same lines of, um, what councilwoman Lumen has said, something about the, uh, when she said, mentioned the, uh, increase in fees and stuff. I've had a lot of people come to me directly and talk to me about that. I wasn't involved in that workshop, I was at work that day. Wish I was, so I could, you know, speak to some, some more of it. I've looked at some of the books and stuff like that to see it. But the concern is, uh, fair treatment of everyone. I'd be more than happy to visit with you, Tom, on that, and, and what they're, they're talking and discussing. So, in the future, we can discuss that if need be, so.
Well, just so you know, we didn't get completely through that. We are planning on two more workshops before council meetings, so we don't screw up Saturday.
No, yeah, I appreciate it.
I just want to make sure you knew that.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Member at large, councilmember Wells?
I have nothing to report.
Well, okay, all right. We'll move on to the next item, City Manager and City Attorney and Staff Reports. I'll turn the floor over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Just, uh, a couple of things to update council on tonight. First off, the Wyoming Association of Municipalities Winter Conference is going to be held in Cheyenne, and it'll start tomorrow, February 21st, and go through the 23rd. I, I will be attending that, and while I am out, I have, uh, put Lou Liscano in as the acting, city manager, if things come up, and I will check in with him every day. So, so those of you that are here, if you would contact Lou, I'll get with him if you can't reach me. Second of all, we had our council retreat on, on February 10th, where we discussed several items associated with the strategic plan. And out of the five directives that are on our strategic plan, we were able to cover three of those. We talked about projects and programs associated with the employees, with beautification, and with infrastructure. So, that leaves two different directives left. They are the, um, community development and trust, and the economic development section. Since, so we will plan on holding those at a future work session before council, and we will go through and give updates on the 2023 plan projects, and we will come up with those goals that we are looking for, for fiscal year 2025. We have started our, our, um, budget meetings that we have with our department heads. Our first couple steps in there is, is we have put together budget work papers that outline the last seven or eight years with the history. And I've, I've got those out to department heads, and we will start scheduling those meetings next Wednesday to go through those. And at that point, we'll also look at the capital items on their requests. After I get through those, those, those meetings, usually in early March, we get the credit report, which will help us to forecast our revenues. And once I have that, I will submit a draft of the budget to council. And, um, we'll see, but we could have a, um, a work session or a special meeting to see, you can see where the status of the budget is, and give further direction as we get closer down to the first draft that goes to, to council. The, the, uh, budget is due June 15th, and we will do three different readings of it. So, we're looking at a, uh, the first reading around the middle of May, and then the second reading at the, at the council meeting in June, the first one. And then, and then we'll do a, a third reading just before the 15th, so. But I will get that draft out, and then we'll be able to, you know, to, to go over what's in there, and make sure that that aligns with.
I'm sorry. Shut your phone.
And that's, that's all the updates that I have for tonight, so.
All right, thank you. Panita?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I have two updates. Councilhead asked for updates regarding, uh, one on the Come and Go lease. It is the property located at 1115 North Higley Boulevard here in Rollins. The, there was an original lease entered into in approximately 1976. Wait, yes, 76. That was a 20-year lease. And it has been sub, then it was renewed in 2006 at a term of $3,000 a month for that lease. It's been subsequently renewed, eh, 10 years later, in 2016, and that goes through 2026. So, the questions are, the questions were, does the city need to update the lease terms with Maverick? Well, there's a couple of, uh, things there. The, there's precedent, uh, legal precedent that a contract entered into by elected officials, which purports to bind subsequent elected officials belonging to the same body, can be void or voidable when the agreement is not reasonably necessary or of a definable advantage, advantage to the city or governmental body. And that was, uh, the holding in Marianneby Board of County Commissioners of Sublet in 1987 decision. And here, because the, now, this is a, a summary that Seth Johnson prepared, so I'm summarizing some of his findings here. Under the rule, the present council could refuse to be bound to that 2016, um, agreement because it is over 20 years old, and it includes two additional subsequent renewals. And the term is no longer defined of a definable advantage to the city, and because the substitution of Maverick for Come and Go as a, as a party provides another opportunity for the parties to review the terms of the contract. And it could even be re, um, modified prior to the end of the current term, which is 2026. Another question was whether Maverick plans to continue to operate at that location. And the response is yes. Mr. Johnson did have a chance to communicate with some Maverick representatives. And they do plan on continuing to operate at that location. And there are discussions that Maverick does plan to rebrand that location at some point during the calendar year of 2024. Don't know quite what name that location's going to go under, whether it's Maverick as the other, or some other iteration of Maverick. And then, final question was whether Maverick would have any interest in potentially purchasing that plot from the city. And with some Maverick representatives, there was some interest in that property and to, for further development by Maverick. But there needs to be some further discussions on what the price would be. And she also requested a copy of the lease. The representatives requested a copy of the lease before they express a, uh, an official interest.
If that, if that would happen, where we decided to sell that property, I believe we would have to, um, pretty much put it out to bid, get it appraised, and then put it out to bid and such like that. Is that correct or not?
Well, I can't answer that specifically at the moment, because I, I don't have access, online access.
That, that's another question.
I do believe that there are, um, our statutory formalities for that process. If council would like me to have that information, I can gather that.
I, I think we should. Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Just so we know all of our options.
How long was it again that we've been paying, they've been paying 3,000?
Since 20, 20, 20, since 2006.
So, in my opinion, um, that's probably needing to be increased.
That, or.
Reevaluated.
That, or possibly sell it. It's really tricky when somebody's leasing something, and then they want to buy it, because it's my belief that it's city-owned, and so we would have to put it out to bid. Well, doing that while leasing it is juggling, and it, it's not as easy as a yes or no. But we'll, we'll find out more about it. And then, the other thing that might happen, uh, Tom, is, might inquire with some of the local realtors and whatnot about, um, what the going rate is. Because in 2006, our economic outlook might have been a lot better than today, so it might go down, but I don't believe so. I think it's up, but understand what I'm saying. See what the fair market value or, or whatever on that type of rental would be today. That make sense? Anybody, is that it? Panita?
Um, one more update. Another question was in regard to the Casper landfill contract. Still doing, um, Mr. Johnson is still doing a little bit of research on that. But in summary, the contract is for the same rate as a residence of Natrona County, as amended from time to time. And there is a rebate included in the contract that is granted if there, if the trash haul between Rollins and Casper is bailed, um, prior to arriving at the Casper facility. Currently, Rollins doesn't have a bailer, and so the rebate can't be utilized. There's some questions on, on, on when the bailer disappeared, and the, the status of the bailer, but that can be updated, that will be updated later.
Yeah, um, I remember all about that. So, when we arrive with our trash there, we're paying the same rate as somebody in town that arrives with their trash?
As, as a Casper resident, yes.
Just, you know, we, if I remember right, and I, and I'm sure I do, the city, our city paid $500,000 for preferential treatment, because, uh, when they first started that regional landfill, that helped pay for their liner. And I, I don't, I don't understand what that means.
Owner to determine the terms.
Well.
I don't know, if you'd have to look at that something.
I think it's like three years ago, when I got elected, that we asked about that, and there was a phone call made, and they dropped it by $10 a ton, which is considerable. But if we're paying the same as somebody that, you know what I mean? I just don't know. We need to look into the origins of that and, and look at that initial contract and see if we're on track or off track. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Be some comparison, comparison pricing around.
Yeah, and, and we do need to call the other regional landfills and, and look at that, too.
No further updates.
All right, thank you. Now, we get to the next item, which is direction from City Council to City Manager. I do have to tell you that this item just kind of bugs me, because I don't know how, I don't know how to go from this to where we should be. And what we should be doing is, instead of, hey, Tom, I want you to do this, he wants to do that, she wants to, you know, all that sort of stuff, we, eh, should be speaking to you in one voice. And if anybody has any ideas how we can do that, I'm more than open to decide how to move forward with that. But it's, it's, when I, what, Tom is our employee, but when I say ours, I mean, we should be speaking with one voice, and, and that, that, that's not how we do it. So, if anybody has any ideas how to migrate from this to where we should be, I'm all, I'm all ears, so.
Could it be questions from City Council to City Manager? Because sometimes, some, most of us just ask questions.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it, it's a fine line. I, but when we're directing, questions is one thing, and I, and I agree with you. You know, if we're seeking information, so we know how to navigate certain things, that's great. But when we actually give direction, that should be with one voice. And I'm not 100% sure in my mind how we would get to that. You understand what I'm saying?
I do.
So, um, at this time, does anybody have any direction to City Council and City Manager? Or from City Council to City Manager? Councilman Garnon?
I, I just have questions. Tom, have we had any applications for any of the positions? Attorney, HR, the, um, finance?
Yeah, we, we have had a few, um, applications for, for Finance Director. Most of those have had about two to three years' experience in a county. So, we are laying those out, you know, looking at those. The, uh, attorney, we have had, um, one application on that that we just received today. And I will forward that to council. Um, on that, you know, to see what the pleasure of the council is and the next steps on that. HR, we, we, we have, um, filled the, uh, the technician or the clerk's position, but we have not really advertised the director position. We're waiting to get through the budget, you know, session before we, you know, really look at that.
I might, maybe I missed a meeting. Is there a reason we, we haven't, why, I guess, I don't understand why we would have an assistant to assist nobody? I mean, because if we don't have the HR, the head HR, I don't understand the position.
So, we, we have that position right now, working with, uh, the Assistant Finance Director who does payroll. And so, she, she's helping with the payroll side of things, and, uh, personnel action forms and those things. So, it isn't really a true hu- human resources position. It's more of the clerk's position to where we, uh, keep the employee files up to date, and they work with payroll to assist them in the onboarding and offboarding processes. So, it isn't really a true HR position that does, um, mediation and.
And that's your, you've, you're in that role?
I have assumed that, that role for now. And then we'll, we'll go through the budget, budget season, and if there are funds available, I, I will make that recommendation. But right now, I think we're, we're looking at, um, cutting some things, you know, around the city budget line. And so, I, I just want to hold off on that till we have a chance to make sure that's the right thing that we want to do.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Weizenberg?
Yeah, Tom, um, this has been asked. I know the answer was, waiting on more information before, but it was asked by Councilwoman Lumen about maybe a workshop for water update and stuff like that. And I should have give this when I had a Ward update, too, but I've been approached to about that. And there's a misconception on the funding, right, that we received. A lot of people are thinking, we got the funding to repair the line, but we got the funding for engineering purposes, right? And there's, so there's a misconception on that. I just, uh, I think it might be time to at least figure that side of things out, maybe talk to the public a little bit about it. Because a misconception of someone coming and saying, oh, we're going to be golden, we got the money for the water line, is, is way different than, no, we got money for engineering for the water line and everything included in that. So, I've done my best of explaining that scenario. But they've, several people have asked about that and asked for some kind of update and understanding, so they, they can know.
Okay, Honorable Mayor, Councilman Weizenberg, um, we, we will bring that forward. That is starting to take shape. Previously, we, it, you know, we, 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 we had a plan, but we're able to pu- put more details into it today. So, we are moving on the design of the water line, of the transmission line. We are moving on that, and on, once we have that, we can start to look for the funding financing, because we know what we are financing at that point. You know, what, where the blow-off valves will be, or the repairs of that, the spring boxes, the iron ductile line and that. Where, right now, we, we need that engineered before we have the details. But we are moving on that. We believe that we, we will be able to move on that probably within the next month on the design.
Do you, do you think you can update the public? Do you think it'd be time now to kind of update the public with a, uh, open forum somewhere of some sort, like?
Uh, I, I think we are, are getting closer to that, but I don't think we know the details after the engineering yet.
You want to wait for that?
Well, that.
It's like getting an estimate on your car. You know, you, how much is it going to fix, cost to fix the car? Well, till you get the estimate, you don't know.
Absolutely.
So, once, once that design work's done, then, uh, we should, we should be in a position to answer any question anybody asks, correct?
We will be, and, and we are working on a timeline of that. And there will be, um, two different RFPs go out within the, the next couple of months. One for the SCADA system. We are ready to, to issue that. And the second one is for the, the spring box rehabilitation in the Sage Creek Springs. So, we will have, have those two going out, RFPs. We'll get the design work on that, so that we, we know the rest of it. And then I, I think at, at that point, it would be good to have the discussion as to what we're looking for funding in the overall timeline for the next at least year, two years, with an overall plan to completion.
If we're going to have a, a town hall, do you think it would be beneficial to have it after the budget? Or before? Especially if we're thinking of changing prices?
I think, well, we could, we could have it at, at any time, you know, the town hall. We, we do need to amend the budget for the engineering, because we, we received that grant in November after the budget was adopted. And we are ready to in, incur those expenses, and they haven't been appropriated yet through, through council. So, so that'll be one thing, timing-wise, with, with the budget. Most of the other work will be in next year's budget. Most of the other work will be in next year's budget. And so, time-wise on that, it could be either way with the budget.
Thank you.
Any more? All right. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is new business. Then I would entertain a motion. Councilman West?
I move to approve the amended and restated cooperative agreement between the Wyoming Department of Transportation, YDOT, and the City of Rollins regarding Sixth Street Bridge with the City of Rollins, Wyoming portion being nine and 51 hundredths percent for a reconnaissance report.
Second?
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the amended and restated cooperative agreement between the Wyoming Department of Transportation, YDOT, and the City of Rollins regarding Sixth Street Bridge with the City of Rollins, Wyoming portion being nine and 51 hundredths percent for the reconnaissance report. Is there any discussion? I just want to make sure everybody knows this is just to look at it and give an estimate.
So we're paying 10,000 for them to look at it? No.
Yeah, the engineers to come look and see what all needs done.
Oh, okay. I just see, okay.
Any discuss, any further discussion?
I don't know.
Please open online voting.
Online voting is closed and motion passes with seven seconds.
Okay, we're going to have to take a two-hour break or we'll sit a record. This meeting is adjourned at 8:14, next meeting, March 5th, 2024.